All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 13, 2018 Westminster City Council meeting. I would ask you please to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Parker, would you take role, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCambre.
Ms. DeCambre is excused.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sights.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a little bit different agenda for change tonight. First item up will be the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting of July the 23rd. If I could have a recommendation from council, please, Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the meeting of July 23, 2018, as presented.
Do I have a second, Mr. Demott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. We have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to item number five. This is citizen communication. All right, ladies and gentlemen, in regards to testimony tonight, citizen communication is for items that are not on the agenda. And we have a sign up for that, but let me clarify what this is. Again, citizen communication is a fair period, up to five minutes, for items not on the agenda or not scheduled for public hearing. Tonight, we have two land use public hearing items. If you're here to testify on those items, do not come during the citizen comment period. You will be testifying on record when those items come up for public hearing. So I have five people signed up, and I recognize at least one of them has already signed up to speak on item 10A. Mr. Bowman, BEU, Ms. Bowman, I have you signed up for citizen comments and both item 10A, which is that you wish to testify on. Okay, would you wait till that hearing comes up? We'll call you up then. All right, thank you, sir. Start with the first person up. Again, your time starts when the green light comes on. You do not need to give your address. If you gave it to me on the sign up sheet, just tell us who you are. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will come on when your time is up. The red light comes on, we ask you to stop talking at that time. First person up is Mr. Keith Johnson.
I will recede by time and speak during the guidance portion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, my name is Isabel King. I'm a member of the organization.
There you go.
I'm a member of the organization, United for New Economy. We're here to talk and ask you guys about some details about the planned legal clinic that's going to be happening on Sundays and Wednesdays for residents of the city of Westminster. We have some questions about, details about how people in Westminster who need these services can access them. So the first question I have is what are the requirements to access the clinic? Is there some sort of ID required? In which case, what would that be? Some of our most vulnerable residents don't necessarily have all the forms of ID, so what would that be? Are you required to live in Adams County, within the borders of Adams County? In which case, how would you prove that? Or how would you show your residency in the county? And then the other question that I have concerns how the Westminster City Council, the city of Westminster, and its agencies are planning on sharing the details and data about the legal aid clinic? In what way is it going to be publicized or presented to the community so that people can take advantage of this opportunity? So they can understand the details of it? Those regulations.
Good, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elena Madrid y estoy aquí para preguntar, primeramente, para darles las gracias por el apoyo que nos han dado en esto, a todos ustedes, y para hacerles la pregunta de que si los abogados van a estar, van a ser bilinguals? Van a dar servicio de inglés y español?
So, good evening. My name is Elena, and I'm here to, first of all, give you thanks for the work that you've done so far to support the legal aid clinic. And my first question is whether the lawyers in the legal aid clinic will be bilingual in English and Spanish. My name is Laura Hayden, interpreting.
¿Cuáles serán las horas de la clínica? ¿Tendrán horarios para la gente que trabaja en la tarde?
And my second question is what will the hours of the clinic be? Will there be hours that are outside of the normal workday for folks that work during the day?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Marilyn Bonantia. And if I mispronounce it, I apologize.
Please reserve my comment for item 10A.
Okay. All right, just for the record, is anyone else here who has an item they'd like to bring forward as public comment that is not associated with either one of the two land use items coming up further on the schedule? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the comment period. Mr. Tripp, please.
I just want to thank the folks that came this evening for your comments, and we'll be following up with you in the near future here. Appreciate your attendance tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Turning to the City Council, any comments from council at this time? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to acknowledge that we had National Night Out last week on Tuesday night, and several of us made it to a couple of different neighborhoods. And it was just such a pleasure to have time with residents, to see the kids playing, and the adults coming together and talking. We just don't see that in our society anymore. It was really nice to have nights like that together. So, thank you Westminster residents for a great evening.
Other comments? Ms. Pinter?
I just want to thank everyone who came out to testify. It's really fun to look out and see a full audience, and we've been taking down your questions. Thank you, and I look forward to those of you who are testifying during our public hearing.
Other comments from council? Hearing no other comments, we'll move on to the items on the agenda under 10. First item, public hearing action for the combined preliminary and official development plan, Telluran and Annexation Area Plan Unit Development and the first reading of Council's Bill Number 28 referencing vacation proportions in La Pan Street right-of-way.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Patrick Colwell with the Planning Division, and this is a public hearing for the Carr Estates PUD, Plaid Unit Development, Preliminary Development Plan and Official Development Plans. Is the point on? Is that on now?
Yes, I'm sure.
Not on, of course.
Yeah, I've got it.
We don't have it.
We do.
Oh.
Sorry, couldn't see that. I want to enter into the public record a couple of items. One, the agenda memo and the attachments. Item did require public notice. Notice was published in the Westminster window on August 2, 2018. The property was posted also on August 2. And additionally, I want to enter into the public record a couple of, I guess there were four additional pieces of correspondence regarding this proposal, and there are copies available in the back, and I believe council has copies of those available also. And this also required notification of property owners within 300 feet of the site. That was mailed, and August 2 was also the date for that. And I think the slide, yeah, the slide does show the area that where folks were notified. The next is an aerial showing the proposed Carr Estates subdivision. And if you look closely, you can see the 144th Avenue is the south boundary. Here on the street is kind of the larger north-south arterial at the east side, and the yellow is where Carr Estates is located. Cheyenne Ridge subdivision is immediately east. You can see that on the slide. McKay Lake is nearby. Huntington Trails is south of 144th Avenue, and Quail Hill subdivision is immediately to the north of this proposed subdivision. The vicinity map again shows, this is another view of the site. You can see Cheyenne Ridge to the east, Huntington Trails to the south, Silver Oaks and Quail Hill to the north. And again, this is the city's comprehensive land use plan showing this property as a planned unit development. The land use allowed there is 2.5 dwelling units to the acre. And this proposal is a part of annexation that was approved in 2001. It was known as the Telluran Annexation. The area outlined in red is about 14 acres of the Telluran Annexation. The hatched area to the left and the hatched area kind of to the south were part of the Telluran Annexation. That's about seven acres total. There's three parcels. That is not included in tonight's review for the Carr Estates. The Carr Estates is an assembly of five other parcels that were part of that annexation. There's some existing homes, dwellings, other buildings on the Telluran site that will become the Carr Estates. La Pan Street is on the very right side. It's the north-south line on this proposal. Here's another view of the plan. It's outlined in yellow. You can see a little better the existing structures. All those structures will be removed except one structure at the far left. It's an existing dwelling. That building will be retained. It will be platted on a separate lot in the subdivision. And this is the site plan showing the proposed layout of the property. La Pan Street remains in its existing position on the far right side. It's a north-south street. It has access to 144th Avenue. At the north end of the top of La Pan Street, that piece of La Pan Street will be vacated. Right now, dead ends into one of the lots in the Quail Hill subdivision, and that will no longer be a dead end. That piece of vacated right-of-way will become part of the private park areas within the Carr Estates subdivision. The proposal is to have some outdoor amenities on that little parcel. There will be a sidewalk that will connect the new small private park to the public park, which is just to the right in the Cheyenne Ridge subdivision, and that's a couple of acres. There's a walking trail, and it does connect to some public amenities in the Cheyenne Ridge subdivision. The subdivision itself here also has some drainage on the edge, which buffers it from the, to the north, to the south, and the east from the existing dwellings along the west, excuse me, the east side of La Pan Street. There will be a drainage swale, and it will have a fence, and it will be separated pretty strongly from those existing dwellings in Cheyenne Ridge. One of the benefits is that some of those lots currently accept some historic drainage from, during times of heavy rain, and the swale will pick those up and convey that water to the storm drain that's in 144th Avenue. Along the west side of the property, there's a similar situation. Those are larger lots at the west side, part of the west side, which is the left side of this plan, upper left. Some of the property is in unincorporated Adams County, and there's a parcel that's in the city of Westminster. But the new drainage swale that will run north-south there will also provide some additional storm protection for those existing properties. Along the north side of the property, there's one large lot and part of another lot that's in Quail Hill that act as, that are the adjacent properties. The new swale that will run east to west along that north side of the Carr Estates will pick up a lot of historic storm water from Quail Hill, and that will be conveyed through the drainage swales down to 144th into the storm drain there. It'll also provide some flood protection for the existing Carr Estates so that that storm water from the north won't flood the existing Carr, the proposed Carr Estates. That storm drain system is also along the proposed east-west street called 145th Place. That storm drain then turns and goes south. It also carries the water, additional storm water into that storm drain on 144th Avenue. The storm drain on 144th Avenue is sized. There's some improvements to it, but once it gets a little east, it's fully sized to carry this additional storm water, which is existing sheet flow across the Carr Estates property. A few other things about the property. As long as you're looking at it, at the very bottom of the property along 144th Avenue, there's a large rectangular square. That particular square is the detention pond for Carr Estates. So storm water's a big deal here in this particular parcel. So off-site storm water is conveyed on these perimeter drainage swales. Storm water on Carr Estates will be retained in that rectangle along 144th Avenue. So storm water is being addressed in this proposal. The storm water system coincidentally happens to create some barriers and some separations from the existing subdivisions. So there's really not great access to the other subdivisions in the neighborhood because of the storm water systems. Internally, there's another park in, private park, proposed in more of a central area in Carr Estates that has playground, has an internal trail that connects it to the internal sidewalk system that's along the public right-of-ways. And a couple of other things. Along the north side, again, to flip back to the north side of this proposal, the five lots that are along the north side are proposed, and the ODP and PDP clearly spell out that those will be one-story homes. That was part of the negotiation with the surrounding property owners. That was originally seven lots. It's been reduced to five lots, and they will not be two-story homes. They'll be one-story. The remainder of the homes in the 33-lot subdivision will be allowed to be up to two stories. So 28 could be two-story, and five will be one-story. So, and the existing property is a one-story, so if there was to be a remodel, it could go to two stories. The way the land is laid out, there will be no walkout structures. It's pretty flat, and it would be a lot of forcing of the grade in order to achieve a two-story with a walkout proposal in the subdivision. I think that covers that. I went through a number of these items. There's a new internal loop road. La Pan Street will be reconstructed to city standards. Right now, it's a dirt road. There is a stub road. I'll just flip back. If you look at the sort of central part of the plan here, the left end of it stubs into some larger lots at the west. At some point in the future, that may or may not develop, but the opportunity is there. The other opportunity that this stub road provides is potential water and sewer access to two existing lots that were in the Telluran subdivision annexation that are within the city of Westminster. And I, one of them, I believe, has water, public water. The other lot, I don't believe, has water or sewer. There is an easement that will cross one of those drainage swales that will be able to provide a link, a connection, if those two property owners decide to connect. It would be at their cost. But this east-west stub road does provide some other advantages to properties within the city of Westminster. There is design standards that are integrated and shown in the official development plan. The internal parks, as I noted, are centrally located. There are sidewalks that do connect to the adjacent Cheyenne Ridge Park. There is good detention for the site. All 10 standards for approval of a PDP that are required in the Westminster Municipal Code have been satisfied. There are 17 standards for the approval of an ODP that are outlined in the Westminster Municipal Code, and those have been satisfied. We did a number of public meetings and some private meetings with adjacent property owners and others over the course of the review of this. These are listed here. There was one July 2017, September of 2017, September, another one in September of 2017, and March of 2018. There were about 20 residents at most of the more public meetings. I've noted a lot of the concerns. There was flooding from adjacent lots. Improvements to La Pan Street. A lot of dust was generated by the existing road. Parks connections were discussed. Green space at the north side of Carr Estates was a big deal. Big item of discussion continues to be. There was, there were issues of water pressure from some of the existing property owners in Quail Hill and Silver Oaks subdivisions to the north. Road connections were questioned. Setbacks from property lines were also discussed. Additionally, the density, the lot size, the minimum lot size in this particular proposal is 10,000 square feet. Turning movements at Paycos on 144th were also questions. The lighting plan, the times of construction, the buffer at the north side of the development was discussed. The perimeter fencing was discussed. The price point of the homes were discussed. A lot of those items are detailed in the development plan. The perimeter fencing is detailed in there, in a couple of locations. The design, the style, the location, et cetera. The city does have some restrictions on times of construction. Lighting plans are pretty standard reviews by the engineering division and the community development department. Another piece that's being reviewed this evening is the vacation of existing streets in the Carr Estates subdivision. There is a, if you look on the right side of this exhibit, there's an existing cul-de-sac in the Carr Estates subdivision that's being vacated, proposed for vacation. It was never built to a city standard. It's sort of a gravel road that provides access to the existing house that's there. Upon vacation, an easement will immediately go into, will replace the full right-of-way so that that existing house will have full public access to a public right-of-way, which is La Pan Street, which will remain for the most part. The left exhibit labeled Exhibit A shows the piece of La Pan Street that will be vacated. And that piece of La Pan Street will go to the Homes Association to be set up for the Carr Estates. It will become an amenity for the subdivision. That's on the docket here tonight. This did meet the standards for vacation. The property was posted. Other agencies were notified, and adjacent owners support the vacation. And the vacation analysis, the engineering staff established that it met those standards. So Planning Commission did review this proposal, Preliminary Development Plan, and the Official Development Plan on July 10, and they recommended the approval with a 7-0 vote. The Planning Commission findings for the PDP were consistent with the Westminster Municipal Code, and the findings for the ODP were consistent with the Westminster Municipal Code. Those items are outlined in your agenda memo. And questions were raised at the Planning Commission hearing. So in your agenda memo in that packet, we've added additional background information for the lawsuit from 1996 that was from a number of residents in the nearby subdivisions. We've added background information for the Cheyenne Ridge Park purchase that was done by the city in 196, excuse me, 1996. And we've confirmed that the maximum height of the one-story dwellings is 25 feet. I think the slide is wrong and shows 28 feet. There was also an error in the Planning Commission agenda memo that noted the lot size was over 13,000 square feet. And we've confirmed that the average lot size in the proposed Carr Estates is about 12,463 square feet. 12,463 square feet, which is about the same size as the average lot size in Cheyenne Ridge subdivision, which is adjacent to the east. And in conclusion, this does meet the city's strategic plan goals, meets three of those goals: vibrant, inclusive, engaged community, beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city, and ease of mobility. So staff recommendation is hold a public hearing. You're doing that. Second one is to approve an amendment to the combined preliminary and official development plan, Telleran Annexation Area PUD, to amend the combined document into a separate PDP to be titled Wilcox Subdivision Carr Estates First Amended Preliminary Development Plan and with changes as shown on the PDP. This recommendation is based on a finding that the amendment meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-14 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Number three is, staff is recommending approval of an amendment to the combined preliminary and official development plan, Telleran Annexation Area PUD, to amend the combined document into a separate ODP to be titled Wilcox Subdivision Carr Estates First Amended Official Development Plan and with changes as shown. This recommendation is based on a finding that the amendment meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code. And number four, recommending that City Council pass Counselor's Bill Number 28 on first reading, vacating a portion of the LaPan Street right-ofway at its terminus at the south end of the Quail Hill subdivision and vacating the right-ofway of West 145th Place west of LaPan Street within the Telleran subdivision amended plat 2. This recommendation is based on a finding that the proposed right-ofway vacations meet the criteria set forth in Section 11-6-9A of the Westminster Municipal Code. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Callow. Before we bring the applicant forward, council and ready questions of the staff before we open this up to the applicant? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and see applicant present. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please identify yourself.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Jim Carr, and I'm the landowner of the property here. I've lived in the North Metro area for over 30 years, and I'm not a land developer or builder. But I was fortunate to be introduced to Winston Wall of Wall Custom Homes, and we agreed to partner on this project. Winston has brought in a couple other experienced professionals as part of our team. And between the three of those individuals, we have combined over 100 years of experience in developing and building residential properties. And Winston's family, this is Winston Wall, by the way, but Winston's family has a long history of building homes in the North Metro area. When I first met Winston in his office in his conference room, he has, on one wall, he has a wall full of raise-the-bar trophies. And the raise-the-bar trophies are awarded by the Home Builders Association to builders that not only build homes of the highest quality, but also excel in customer service. I purchased the first parcel, which of the approximate 14 and a half acres, in 2002. That was located right at the corner of 144th and LaPan. And then we were able to acquire the adjacent property just north of it in 2004. When I purchased the properties, my goal was to someday build me a home and subdivide the property. I loved the area then, and it's way better now in that particular area. With the location of our property and the surrounding neighborhoods, I believe the best use for our property is to build high-end homes. Our project is being proposed, fits very well with the neighborhood, and complements existing houses in our area. We will be building custom homes with a price point between our neighbors to the east and to the south. It will be a welcome new addition, replacing a current vacant property with a community of beautiful homes. We have cleaned up the property a lot in the last three years, or the last few years, but it still looks out of place with the nice neighborhoods to our east and the south. I will be living in Carr Estates, and so will some of my family members. At the Planning Commission hearing last month, there were some neighbors to the north of Quail Hill that were asking the commission to support a change in the current zoning. When I purchased the first parcel in 2002, the zoning was R2 and 1/2. The remaining five parcels I've acquired since then are all R2 and 1/2. But for 16 years, I've been following all the rules of Biden's. Now that I had to finish mine, they were asking the city to change the rules. And there was also some concern by the neighbors to the north of our drainage. They have this severe drainage issue, and there are a lot of rain in a short period of time. It appears that they did not, did not design a facility to properly handle the larger blocks of rain. He had our area designed to handle our drainage, and then he learned that they have some serious problems with flooding. And they are slightly up here from us, so he had to design a double drainage system to fix their problem. So it ended up, we had to design and build two drainage systems, one for our area, one for our open area, and one for LaPan. That, this, of course, had a lot of additional costs that we had to eliminate, and we had to, plus we had to eliminate a lot. But we have made some other accommodations in which I think we should have supported the work itself. That's all I've got, but I think you see your comments.
All right, Mr. Carr, don't go too far. We may have questions for you soon to get the rest of your testimony on.
I'd like to thank the mayor for your time in the city council. And considering the approval of our development, I will try to agree to avoid redundancy in respect of return. I'm Winston Wall with Wall Custom Homes. As Jim said, our Wall Custom Homes, we've been a custom home builder for 25 years, and we've built over 400 custom homes in the Denver metro area. We have won numerous local awards, we've won national awards. We're also second-generation home builders. My father's been a wall builder. This happened with his support, et cetera. We know home buildings are even what they're saying.
Hello? There we go. Carr Estates, this is, it'll be a one-of-a-kind custom home community, starting in the 900 thousands. We're going to have 33 lots. We meet or exceed all the city requirements in lot size, setbacks, materials. We feel like this is, as Jim said, a, there's a need in the city for custom lots, and there's a shortage of lots, so we feel like this is a perfect fit for the city. The property, as Patrick explained, is approximately 14.5 acres. The north is Quail Hill, our north boundary. It's heavily treed. In the summertime, you can barely see through to the houses, so there's a really nice buffer existing there right now. There's approximately three lots that touch our development. On the east boundary is Cheyenne Ridge, where approximately 12 lots touch our property. The west is more rural with 2 and 1/2-acre tracks. And the south, across from 144th, is Huntington Trails. So we took it very seriously when we proposed this project to meet with the homeowners and try to accommodate their needs and try to be a good neighbor to them. So as Patrick discussed, we had several meetings with the neighbors. During those meetings, after getting input, we changed our design approximately four different times. We realigned roads because we had a suggestion at one point to run a road through, then we moved it and changed it to a different location because the neighbors didn't want it there. So we tried to do everything we could to accommodate the neighbors and try to make the development fit in with the existing neighborhoods. One of the, we had a lot of concern from Quail Hill neighbors, and they had several issues that they were concerned about. One of the biggest issues that which you've heard about is the existing water issue. When it rains, it floods back there and it sits there. There was, nothing was put in to take care of the water flow. So the other one was type of product and the distance to where our homes would line up with theirs, and they wanted to minimize the impact of the development. So we agreed to accommodate the undetained water flows, which, as we discussed, there's a drainage channel along the east boundary, and there's a drainage channel along the west boundary that goes, well, and also on the north boundary, a big drainage channel to try to take their water out and our water. And it's all designed to exceed 100-year flood through our engineers, and the city engineers have gone through it and approved it as well. So we did that, and that was at a considerable expense to us. We also had lost a lot in that last accommodation. We increased the rear setback 15 feet from our last proposal because we wanted to give them more distance to try to minimize the impact to their neighborhood. And the other thing we did is we decided on that boundary, as Patrick said, we eliminated some lots there. And we also said we would only build ranch plans, and we would agree to a 25-foot height restriction. So there wouldn't be big, tall houses right behind it. We wanted to push them back and restrict the type of homes and the height. So the meetings with Cheyenne Ridge, we agreed to work with them, and we're going to rebuild the fence on that, on that boundary, on that east boundary, to, so they'll have a nice new fence, and it'll look good coming in with masonry columns and so forth. So we really tried to work with the neighbors. In, at this point, we have letters of support from three sides. We've got a letter of support from the Cheyenne Ridge Homeowners Association. We have letter support from the Huntington Trails homeowner, and we have a letter of support from Dirk McLean, who has an acreage site to the west. So we feel like the project will fit the neighborhood great, and we would ask you for your approval. And I can answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wall. Counsel, any questions of the applicant at this time? All right, Mr. Wall, you and Mr. Carr, just don't go too far.
Okay.
Yeah, just leave it there. All right, counsel, if there are no other questions, I'm going to open, go ahead and open this up to the public and see if there's any comments. I have, I believe, three people who have indicated they want to speak on this particular item. It's Mr. Keith Johnson, Dave Bowman, Mike Close.
Beeman.
Beeman, okay. And Meredith, I think you're also on 10A. Okay. I just want to make sure I got everybody. Is anybody else that wants to talk on 10A? Did you sign up?
I did not, sir.
Okay, that's fine. We'll get to you after I get those signed up first, all right? All right, this time, I'll open it up to public comments for anybody who has any comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Johnson. You were first on the list, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Keith Johnson. My name is Keith Johnson. I live at 14717 Osage Court. I'm here tonight speaking to you both as a resident and as a member of the Board of Directors for the Quail Hill HOA. So I'm speaking tonight to express further concerns that we have with Carr Estates development as currently proposed, and asking that you'd make a motion and a vote to not approve the ODP in its current form. We do not believe the plan is in compliance with Section 11-5-14 standards for approval of the PDP, Criteria 4, 5, and 6, or Section 11-5-15 under standards for approval of the ODP, Criteria 5, 6, and 7. These sections state that the plan is compatible, harmonious, and has no adverse impacts. We believe the proposed Carr Estates plan would negatively impact the rural residential character of our neighborhood, our quality of life, and our future home values. Thus, it is not compatible, harmonious, and does cause adverse impact to existing residents. Understanding and understanding what Mr. Wall had to say, three force does not make a whole. So we're now all in favor of this. We ask that you would instead approve a revised plan which matches the established earlier precedent cases by the city and is in compliance with the aforementioned standards. We believe this could be accomplished by either creating a larger buffer between the incompatible densities or by reducing the density at the community boundary up to one home per acre. This way, there's more gradual fade between the developments and greater compatibility. Historically, the city of Westminster has been working with its residents to maintain the rural residential character and low housing density in the northeastern corner of the city, and has itself established this precedent by how these disputes were previously resolved as our sincere hope that the relationship between the city and its residents should continue amenable between both parties. Historic points in fact, in approximately 1996, Quail Hill and the surrounding neighborhoods petitioned and successfully convinced City Council to annex Silver Oaks Development, located directly west of Quail Hill in unincorporated Adams County, at a density of one home per acre. The developer's original proposed plan was for nearly four houses per acre. In approximately 1999, Quail Hill and the surrounding neighborhoods petitioned and successfully convinced City Council to approve the Cheyenne Ridge development at a density lower than 2.5 homes per acre zoned in density. The residents petitioned, and the City Council, Council Manager agreed to reduce the density of the Cheyenne Ridge subdivision and provide a transitional buffer zone and open park space between both Cheyenne Ridge and the lower-density Quail Hill. With these historic precedents in mind, we ask the city to find a reasonable compromise between the original zoning in this area of 1 to 10-acre lots and the requested zoning of 2.5 homes per 1 acre, setting similar compromises that have been reached in the past between, with developments in this part of the city. Those examples include Cheyenne Ridge and Quail Hill in 1999. While Cheyenne Ridge has the same zoning of 2.5 homes per acre, there exists a public park and a green space precisely at the boundaries of these two development. That park exists at the border of the two communities with differing densities where the eight homes had been originally proposed and is revised standard zoning. The setback from the Quail Hill property line to the near Cheyenne Hill residences is now greater than 200 feet. The buffer was a concession made to offset the density impacts of Cheyenne Ridge and Quail Hill homes. By comparison, I believe the Carr Estates proposed setback is approximately 63 feet, which is less than 1/3 of the other buffer zone. If we look at Huntington Trails in the lower-density Lexington Estates, we see that Huntington Trails is another precedent that we'd ask you to consider. Again, while this then, this development is zoned at 2.5 homes per acre, there's also a 200-foot nature walking trail offsetting the 10,000-square-foot lot-sized homes, which are similar to those proposed in Carr Estates. Lastly, the Silver Oaks and Quail Hill. Silver Oaks was originally proposed to be a higher density, however, in response to community concerns around conserving the rural residential character of the area, the density was revised to match Quail Hill's one home per acre. And the old Paycos Road, which fell at the boundary of the two communities, was repurposed as a buffer. Therefore, we're asking the City Council to recognize these lower densities of the adjacent and nearby properties in Quail Hill of one home per acre, and also in Silver Oaks, one home per acre, and adjacent properties immediately to the west in unincorporated Adams County, which have lot sizes of 2 and 1/2 to 10 acres respectively. So to do anything to the contrary, we would be to ignore the precedents that have been set by the city of Westminster with regard to all prior developments in the area when looking at two different zonings of incompatible sizes. So there's no justifiable reason that we see to apply a different standard now with the Carr Estates development. So to reiterate and summarize my request, we're asking that you'd vote not to approve the ODP in its current form, and instead approve a revised plan which matches the existing revised standards established by these precedent cases, either through creating a transitional buffer or by reducing the density at the community boundary. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, did you testify at the public hearing with the Planning Commission?
I did not. We're a recent, we moved into the community in March of this year.
Did anyone from representing Quail Hill HOA that you say you're representing, did they testify?
I do not know, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Johnson before he leaves the room?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, I have a couple of questions. Could you return to the mic, please?
Just very quickly, Mr. Johnson referenced two different parts of our code, and I got the second one, but I didn't, it was 11-.
11-5-14, which I believe goes- Eleven-dash-five-dash-fourteen, which I believe goes with the PDP, and eleven-dash-five-dash-fifteen.
I got the ODP one. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, don't go away. There may be questions for you, so...
Sure.
As long as we're hearing, not, you can go sit down, but just don't leave.
All right, thank you.
If you would, please. Dave, we got up to you finally. And I do have your address, sorry, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, my name is Dave Beeman. I've lived in Quail Hill for twenty-four years and one-four-seven-five-seven Osage Court. We're original owners. In nineteen ninety-three, Quail Hill was the only residential planned unit development in Westminster north of one-hundred-and-twentieth Avenue. There was no Cheyenne Ridge, no Silver Oaks, no Huntington Trails, no Orchard Chopping Center. Lexington Estates was just starting to be developed. McKay Lake had not yet been annexed into Westminster and every lot within three miles of Quail Hill was at least five acres large. At the time, the one-acre lots in Quail Hill were considered high-density in north, far northwest Westminster. To this day, every lot to the west and northwest of the proposed, proposed Carr Estates within two miles is two-and-a-half to ten acres large. As Keith mentioned, those lots are either in unincorporated Adams or in the City of County of Broomfield. I was on the Quail Hill Board of Directors when Silver Oaks, which is located west of Quail Hill and north, northwest of Carr Estates, was proposed in nineteen ninety-five. We worked closely with the Westminster planners, the planning commission, and the city council to set its density to one-acre lots. I was also on the Board of Directors when Cheyenne Ridge was proposed in nineteen ninety-six with a density of two-point-five houses per acre. At the time, there was no city master plan, so we were shocked that such a high density would be approved by the city, especially after Westminster recently agreed to limit Silver Oaks to one-acre lots. After negotiations with the city and developer failed to reduce the density of Cheyenne Ridge, our HOA, uh, yeah, other HOAs and other parties filed suit to reduce the density and to create a buffer with Quail Hill. The net result of that lawsuit was that the city facilitated creating a buffer between Cheyenne Ridge and Quail Hill in the form of an open space park. We've recently obtained legal advice, which says that that decision set a precedent and is binding into the future because the three developments of Quail Hill, Cheyenne Ridge, and Carr Estates are attached. Some of the original plaintiffs are here tonight to ensure that the, the current council is aware of these agreements that the city made with the Quail Hill HOA in nineteen ninety-six. We in Quail Hill would prefer not to relitigate this buffer issue. It was settled in nineteen ninety-six. The city facilitated a compromise solution at that time. We are not opposed to the Carr Estates' development, but we expect prior agreements to be honored. It is not our intent to delay Carr Estates and we would prefer not to incur attorney's fees and litigation costs on either side. However, if necessary, we have the funds and local support to pursue litigation to, to defend our previous agreements with the city. Our attorneys advise us that we have a very strong case due to the attachments between the three developments, Quail Hill, Cheyenne Ridge, and Carr Estates. All we ask is that the city and the developer sharpen their pencils one more time to improve the transition zone or buffered areas between Carr Estates and Quail Hill. We hope these modifications can occur without attorneys and without litigation. Therefore, we respectfully request the city council to vote no on this development plan and give us another opportunity to meet with the developer and with the city to pursue a mutually acceptable compromise without litigation. Thank you in advance for recognizing and affirming the previous agreement between Quail Hill and the city. Thank you.
Mr. Beeman, I'll ask you the same question. Did you offer your testimony at the planning commission hearing for this?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions of Mr. Beeman at this time? Okay. Mr. Beeman, I ask you the same thing. Please not leave. Ms. Meredith? Pull the mic down, will you? Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, uh, my name is Meredith Benasiak and I am a homeowner living in the property abutting the north boundary of the proposed Carr Estates. All five homes proposed along the north boundary, um, abut our property line. Therefore, we're very directly impacted by construction and long-term occupancy of the five homes, um, that, that are proposed along our property line. I'd also like to establish my authority on the issue, um, having taught ethics in design and planning as a faculty of University of Colorado for nearly a decade to approximately two-thousand students in environmental design, planning, architecture, design studies, some of whom have gone on to serve Westminster planning in, in other local cities. So, hopefully, I taught them well. Um, I'm speaking, I'm testifying, um, partly, um, we filed an appeal, so I'm not exactly sure how that works today, but, um, our July twenty, our July nineteenth appeal was filed as a result of material facts being unavailable or omitted from the public record, uh, at the planning commission meeting. The lack of information and misinformation was in response to some key questions from city planning commission, um, asked during the July tenth hearing in determining whether the proposed development is in compliance with Section eleven-dash-five-dash-fourteen standards for approval of PDP, criteria four, five, and six, and Section eleven-dash-five-dash-fifteen standards for approval of ODP, criteria five, six, and seven, regarding whether the plan is compatible, harmonious, and has no adverse impacts. We believe the Carr Estates' plan would negatively impact the rural residential character, um, and our future home values. As we learned today, um, the price point to match homes to the east and south is not what was shared with us before. Thus, it's not compatible nor harmonious and does create adverse impact to your existing As Keith suggested, we're not here to oppose change in development nor negate the assigned zoning of the parcel. It's entirely about the boundary condition in which the two different densities are being brought together, with the result that the homes located on the boundary lose their rural residential character and associated attributes. As was mentioned before, all surrounding neighborhoods included in the file, um, which are also zoned at two-point-five homes per acre, there's a minimum two-hundred structure-to-structure distance to mitigate some of those impacts. And again, it was, um, we believe that the existing setback, it's not entirely transparent, is sixty-three feet, which is, um, less than a third provided by those, uh, others, um, communities referenced. I was told by planning staff in PewDieu, approval Westminster doesn't consider precedent. In this case, though, it's quite a bit more than precedent. The city's decision to purchase land in nineteen ninety-six to develop a green space, which is now Cheyenne Ridge Park, is attached to people, um, my co-appellant Randy Sedergrin, the community, the Quail Hill residents, who negotiated that condition with the city. The agreement is not a separate issue from the case before us because it involves the same parties, the same homes, and the same context. We are part of what happened in nineteen ninety-six, so it's more than a precedent case, it's the same case. The legal advice we've received points out there must be continuity in the way the agreement carries forward, since both parties and context are the same, so there's consistency with prior agreements made by the city. I've heard, um, from the city that there is no evidence of the agreement, but it's alluded to in the documents in Attachment Nine of today's agenda describing the quick purchase of the land and we have several witnesses here today, as well as witnesses who've submitted letters and testified about the nature of the agreement and as evidence, the park does exist. No evidence has come forward to dispute that it was anything other than an agreement to create a buffer between the mismatched densities. So, to approve the plan without formally revisiting prior agreements made and offer the developer concessions, which were not approved in any previous developments adjacent to rural residential, is arbitrary and capricious. Finally, I just wanted to mention that I reached out to several city council members at the end of twenty seventeen to discuss what public processes were made available to Westminster citizens for establishing a conservation district and preserving the character of our neighborhood, similar to what was done in Broomfield, less than a mile away. In many other municipalities, such a request has to be brought forward, um, by a city council member, which is why I had reached out. Um, those conversations stalled until plans were filed, at which point the city council couldn't respond because of conflicts of interest. I, I turned to city planning, um, to explore what public processes were available to establish a conservation overlay or transitional, transitional overlay district to protect and conserve the area. I learned no such processes exist. I hope Westminster will in the future remedy that before it loses its areas worth protecting and responsibly develop our remaining undeveloped lands. In this case, though, the prior agreement made of how to treat the community boundary in nineteen ninety-six shouldn't be overturned and therefore I ask you not to approve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, sir, if you come forward, please, and identify yourself.
Let me get to the mic, I guess, first, right? Good evening. My name is Randy Sedergrin, uh, some of the ones, uh, named that was, uh, mentioned there. And I find it interesting that twenty-two years later, here I stand again, um, but none of you are the same. Dave, Marty, took Marty's place there, I guess, uh, maybe there was some interim in that, but, uh, while everything in twenty-two years, um, apparently has changed, some things haven't and that's why we're kind of back to this spot again. I wanted to start this by asking you the same question that I asked, uh, planning staff about this pretty significant project that's going out there. Have any of you actually personally been out to visit this site? Yes? So, Herb, you've been out there? So, one person, anybody else going out there?
I'm sorry. We can answer later, but...
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, great, yeah. Um, I apologize. Um, so, what I found interesting about when I talked to your staff, because I did testify at your planning staff meeting, or the staff's planning meeting, um, was that no one's ever even been out there. Not one person on your planning staff has ever set foot out there to look at this, is what they testified to when I asked that question. So, it looks really interesting on PowerPoint, but what it doesn't do justice, and I have some better pictures, I have some aerial pictures, um, that show the area better, is exactly what part of Westminster we're talking about out there. This is not a traditional kind of area that we see like around city center. Um, and, and I'll go into maybe more of that, but I, I do have an officially written statement here. I kind of hate to do this because it gets, you guys fall asleep and I kind of lecture on the thing, but, so I don't mess up any points. Let me, if I can, uh, read this prepared statement and, uh, and kind of go from there. So, I have built and I've lived at fourteen-six-zero-two Callamith Court in Quail Hill subdivision for over twenty-four years and in the City of Westminster for over thirty-three years. If you look on that, that plat where that, that proposed little pocket park that they were going to put in there, but by the way, that was going to be a drainage area before, but now apparently it's a park. But that, I live right, my house is, backs right up to that. I don't know if you can see that on your screen, but I'm, I'm the one that's right at the top, uh, right next to where Meredith is at. Um, Quail Hill and my property directly backs to the proposed Carr Estates. During this time, I have previously served as the president of the Quail Hill Homeowners Association for over ten years, as well as the founder and the president of the Adams County Citizens for Responsible Development. It's known as ACCORD. ACCORD was a citizens group formed of concerned citizens in this north, north area to help ensure individual citizens had a collective voice for ensuring responsible development and build-out of this northern boundary of Westminster. Due to the rural characteristics of this area, we learned early on that the typical city proceedings just don't adequately take into account our lower-density lifestyles, nor do they provide for proper citizen representation of this area. A simple example of this is the public notification process. As you heard, um, it's, uh, notifications go out to property owners within a three-hundred-foot, um, area of the proposed, um, um, area going in. And I would imagine in a normal, you know, city surrounding of higher densities, a three-hundred-foot buffer would get an adequate representation of the neighborhood. In this area, three-hundred-foot may get three people notified, myself, Meredith, and the one other home. It doesn't take into the, account the rest of the forty-eight houses of Quail Hole, so, Quail Hill homeowners or the, of the subdivision up there. I always hate that. I look down and I can never tell where I am exactly here. I am and have been intimately familiar and involved with the planning development of this area, including the bordering Cheyenne Ridge and Silver Oaks Development. While we greatly appreciate Patrick's, the developers, Mr. Carr's, um, and everybody else's, um, uh, planning and the great efforts to date of this, as it's been stated earlier, we simply don't believe this proposed PDP and ODP is adequately addressing the local citizens' concerns of lower densities that match the original city of Westminster's comprehensive development plan for this area, for providing an adequate transition zone between these significantly different subdivisions, and for addressing the observed flooding and drainage concerns. Now, I know you heard before that it had cost Mr. Carr and the development, developers in there a significant cost, um, to, to, to take care of this flooding. All of those lots across the back, those seven, they probably should be a flood plain. It, it turns into a, a, well, a nice little lake back there. Um, when we had our two thousand thirteen floods, um, that total area was completely underwater back there. So, a simple resolution, if they want to save more money, is just don't build any houses on that and you wouldn't have to deal with some of these things. Um, but it, it was kind of portrayed as that, that's, that's a Quail Hill issue that's running into it. That has been there for, again, twenty, thirty-plus years, um, and what's out there is nothing but open fields in that area right now. What's changing is all of a sudden, if you want to put houses in there and keep those houses from flum, flooding out. Uh, this northern area of Westminster is unique from the rest of the city as it has a rural appeal due to the openness of houses sitting on one-acre lots in Quail Hill and Silver Oaks and the surrounding properties, properties sitting on five-plus acres each. While this may appear as just another proposed development, it has great personal meaning to all of us living in this unique area. Everything you heard from the developer regarding quality and reputation, we, we do believe that to be true. And as you heard before, we're not trying to stop this, we're just trying to get it to fit and blend and, and, and do what's right. Everything, uh, the, the issue remains, however, as this overall proposed development density on the north end of the Carr Estates and lack of any real transition area between the extreme density differences simply does not meet the unique rural character we believed we collectively, us in the city, tried to preserve in this north area now some twenty years ago. While minor adjustments have been made to the Carr Estates' plan, the main citizen issues dealing with overall density of the proposed subdivision, adequate flood drainage along the north side of the proposed development, and providing a buffer zone between Carr Estates and the established Quail Hill subdivision to provide a more reasonable transition area to better blend the four X difference in slot sizes, um, needs to be addressed. We again respectfully request your involvement to ready this proposed development. Reducing the densities and adding a buffer area precedence has already been established for the similar-type development of this area, as you heard from our Quail Hill Board. When Silver Oaks was being planned, the city and planning council got involved to lower the densities of the subdivision and were lowered from the original ODP, PDP plans to match those densities of the surrounding area and the adjacent Quail Hill subdivision. When Cheyenne Ridge was developed, city planning and council again intervened on the original PDP, ODP plans and were also modified to lower the density and allowed for a buffer zone between the existing Quail Hill subdivision and a higher-density Cheyenne Ridge development. That action from ACCORD required the city council's involvement in basically acquiring the lots along the northern corridor in order to provide more open space and a larger buffer between the two subdivisions. Around that time, we were also told the city completed their more comprehensive, we used to call it a master plan, I understand Patrick's told me now that it's been renamed or the comprehensive plan, but we were also instrumental in, in, in co-developing that thing. And the reason was is because it was supposed to ensure the future development adhered to these same standards of increasing open space and lowering densities of the new developments in this area. The intent was to support open space and support the citizens' desires to keep this north area of Westminster's rural nature preserved by only allowing low-density, higher-acreage development while having the higher-density development as you approach city center. That was the whole premise we just, we, we, uh, believe to be the case behind this comprehensive land use plan of the city and that's why we supported that, um, when this litigation was going down. Lower densities that match the existing one-to-five-acre lot development while also preserving the open space. The latest Carr Estates' PDP, ODP does not do this. Number one, density. Densities are still considerably greater than that of Quail Hill, which is R1, um, although this density thing on, on what the numbers are, they changed again tonight that you heard from what they were at the planning council and what we're told before. So, the, the number keeps moving, but nonetheless, it's significantly different than the R1 that is in the area or the five-acre properties that surround that. So, your comparative zoning table that they had in the planning meeting is missing the Silver Oaks subdivision directly northwest from Carr, which was also R1, and the majority of the other surrounding land, which as you heard before, is also five-acre properties. How and when did the zoning take place and changes, I, I, you know, I, I, we won't, we won't go into that, I guess. Number two, buffer and transition, and this is probably the real key here as well, um, the area between the subdivision. The houses along the northern border were stated to have been pushed back an additional fifteen feet from the previous plan, but again, that changed and now this looks like something else, so it's still not real clear as to what is this actual buffer that's going to occur. actual buffer that's going to occur when this actually gets built out, especially as those lot sizes are listed as being bigger than in our last meeting, that was from before. Drainage, the new ditch to handle the runoff from Quail Hill is still questionable to adequately handle flooding, especially using actual runoff in 2013 or revised 100-year flood estimates, leaving those houses along the northern border, we believe, still subject to flooding. I don't think this, the numbers didn't quite bear out in this thing. Layout and usage, the lot that was removed at the northeast corner of the subdivision was stated to be open space, drainage basin to handle flooding and runoff. It now says it's going to be a sand volleyball pit. Is that a drainage basin lot now, or is it proposing gazebo's? It's kind of unclear what that little thing's going to be right there, even though it's being portrayed as a positive thing as this park. It seems to be more of a requirement for some drainage right there than anything else. Like Cheyenne Ridge, it would be desired if City Council could once more intervene to lower the overall density of the northern half of the proposed subdivision, which would provide for increased open space and a buffer between Quail Hill and the proposed four-time denser car estates. Simply extending, and this is, I guess, where all this mumbo jumbo, I probably should have just started with this, it's a simple fix. It's a real simple fix that could, I think, make these guys happy, could make the citizens happy, and everybody could harmoniously go forth on this thing. And that is to simply extend the existing Cheyenne Ridge Park to the west would address these concerns. By taking out the proposed lots along that north end of the proposed car estates and by simply extending the park, you would effectively address our belief of adherence to the desired city comprehensive master plan for lower-density build-out of this area. It would better blend and transition the subdivisions. It would alleviate or mitigate the forthcoming subdivision border issues that are going to occur, I'm pretty sure of it, and it would ensure that this north area of Westminster maintains its rural and unique character and open space that makes this such a desirable and attractive area of the city of Westminster. We ask that you postpone the approval of this PDP and ODP or modify it as it currently stands. I and others voted for each of you based on your platform of greater citizen representation, your controlled and responsible city development going forward. And I'd like to thank all of you for your support of your citizens and for caring about the future build-out of this unique area as much as the concerned citizens and neighbors that live there. Again, it's just not your typical project, and it doesn't do justice on a PowerPoint presentation. I would urge any of you to come out and actually visit the site, walk around it, and I think you would instantly see quite a different picture than what's being displayed by the developers here and what it looks like in a PowerPoint presentation. I thank you for your consideration, and I thank you for your time on this.
Counsel, are there any questions at this point?
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question. Thank you so much. Mr. Sandgren?
Sedergrin.
Sandergren, I apologize for mispronouncing that.
That's okay. S-T-T-E-R-G-R-E, Sedergrin.
Thank you. You made a comment about the drainage would not be able to hold up to either the 2013 flood or the 100-year flood. Do you, did you have engineering look at that, or do you have data that I haven't seen yet?
Well, my belief is that the data points that you have for input, I haven't, you know, taken an official engineering run, you have professionals do that.
Right.
My premise is your data inputs are incorrect.
Okay.
The data inputs that they used on that does not show the volume of water that we are starting to receive as a result of climate change that's going on. You know, the predictions of the 100-year flood that were based 20 years ago or so, I think are radically different than before. So what I'm saying is that when they run those engineering numbers, and they ran them a couple times, because the first time, it wasn't quite, they thought it was adequate, but then they came back, and I'm not sure how that happened, but they said, no, it wasn't adequate. We still don't believe it's adequate, and what that's based on is just visual looking at it. You look at the amount of water that runs down that thing and that sits in those places where those seven houses are going to go across the back there, and it's just a matter of time before it overflows that bank and it will flood those houses out.
Okay, thank you for your...
Thank you.
I just wanted to understand that.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So again, for those of you who have already testified, it sounds like so far I've had his testimony in opposition, but to be fair to the applicant, is there anyone here who wishes to testify in favor of the applicant? Okay. Staff, if you have any other comments or questions at this time?
I have additional comments on the transition, if you would like to hear that at this point.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So the car estates was planned to be at a higher intensity than the rural character of the Quail Hill, and this decision was made in 2001 at annexation, when we also designated the comp plan at this density and intensity. We also did the zoning that allowed for that density as well. The PDP criteria specifically requires conformance with the comp plan and the zoning, so the density proposed is also in conformance with that. The proposal before us is the PDP, and that's subject to very specific criteria. That criteria does not require adjacent development to match precisely. To carry it to an extreme, if that were the case, we would have one-acre lots throughout the city. However, the PDP does require us to analyze the compatibility. Can you switch to the site plan? I'd like to talk a little bit about what we look for in that compatibility. We do look for the use. The use is the same. We look at the bulk, and the bulk is determined by the lot size, and it's also determined by the lot size in relationship to that structure. I'm going to refer to this drawing that's labeled as a site plan, and you can see that car estates has five lots on the northern boundary. That's adjacent to three lots at Quell Ridge, or Quell Hill. So in terms of compatibility, again, not being match existing to the adjacent, we look at, is it a reasonable match in terms of compatibility? And knowing that the zoning and comp plan allows for that higher intensity to the south, five lots adjacent to three lots is a reasonable comparison. Now, I would like you to look at the setbacks. When we look at setbacks, we typically have a standard of about 25. In this particular case, we have an adjustment upward to a 35-foot setback. The closest structure shown in Quell Hill to the north is 25 feet. Is that correct, Patrick? And that's kind of an expectation you would see is 25 feet. So in Quell Hill, we have one structure that is at 25 feet, the others are further away because of the lot configuration. In this particular case, we have the lots further than that standard setback that we see, and that was an accommodation made to address a greater separation between those We also look at the lot size as it relates to the size of the structure, and in this particular case, the larger lots in Quell Hill have two stories, and I believe some of them are walkouts. In car estates, there was an accommodation made, and those are one-story structures immediately adjacent to. So the zoning allowed two stories, but the accommodation to reduce the bulk of those additional lots was made, and we think that creates a better sense of space between those structures. And another accommodation is made in the initial layout. When you put rear lots back into rear lots, you create a greater sense of space. We have 35-foot setbacks and 25-foot setbacks, so it's a greater sense of space. If you laid it out where it was side yard to rear yard, you wouldn't have that greater sense of space, because side yards are typically smaller. So we think, based on the combination of the use, the bulk, the setbacks, and the building orientations, that creates that transition that would be appropriate, given that we have entitlements for a density of a higher standard than the property to the That concludes, are there any questions?
Okay. Mr. Demont, you had a question, staff?
I have a couple of questions. One quick one. At the Planning Commission meeting, were there residents who spoke in favor of? Do we know?
I have to be honest, I don't recall. I can, I can check the minutes.
My other question, I think, would be for Mr. Frankel. I'm just curious to have some input from staff on the legal precedent and your opinion of that, that has been spoken about a couple times from 1996.
Mr. Frankel?
So I'd invite counsel to convene an executive session for attorney-client communication and be happy to advise you.
Okay. We'll hold that one for just a minute, and we'll take it under consideration at that point.
Mr. Mayor, on that question, do you know anything from us, or is that just what's going to come next?
That's what's going to come next. I'm going to ask for an executive session on that.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions at this time, Mr. Demont? Ms. Site, you have other questions other than the advice of the city attorney on this?
I do, and I'll keep them brief. That actually was a question I had, though. I am curious, because the comp plan was brought up by one of the neighbors and then in addition, by you, in 2001, I would imagine there was community outreach done before the comp plan was adopted, and then I know it was adopted again in 2015. How many other times? Were those the only two updates?
The comp plan that was referenced was when it was originally zoned and annexed. We had to designate a comp plan designation for it. The official overall city comp plan designation was in 2013.
The original comp plan, I believe, was 1997.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I wasn't clear in my question. What I'm asking is how many comp plans, where we've gone through the whole process, has this been zoned R2.5? And so I know it would be the 2013, and it sounds like starting in 2001, it was...
I think it was about 2007, there was another comp plan amendment that looked at the entire document.
And we did allow public input into those comp plan...
Yes, there was extensive public input.
I doubt you have this available. Do you know at that time, were there concerns expressed from Quail that this was not R1?
I was not part of the comp plan review. I just, I know, I mean, I might have the days wrong, the years wrong also. I, that was not part of my job responsibility, but I knew it was ongoing.
But there have been multiple opportunities.
Lots of opportunities.
Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Site?
I'm sorry, that's all.
Okay. Other than a potential request for an executive session to speak with the city attorney and seek legal advice on some questions that are outstanding, is there any other questions of counsel at this point to the E of the applicant or to those who have testified? All right. I'm going to request the counsel approve an executive session to seek advice from the city attorney in regards to a number of items that have been brought up in testimony, and at this point, I would ask for a motion and a second. Ms. Gully?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go to executive session.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, the City Council will take a recess, and we will come back out of executive session and restart this meeting as soon as we can. So counsel, if you will adjourn?
First?
Yeah, take a quick break on the way in.
Bye.
Yeah.